Here's the update on that 1024. Double dog guaranteed that no Restore Act money directed to the counties would be preempted by the state.
You know, I said all the time, they got to talk about all that, I said all the time, on the state, seeing how big of, how big a chunk of money that was.
Thank you for coming and arresting you on that funding issue. I never understand it, it's not in the budget.
You move line items, but when you get something that's really consequential, that you just can't move into budget line item, that's when you gotta go.
Twenty thousand, thirty thousand.
Twenty or thirty thousand.
Way more than that. Okay, as long as we don't complete all planning in the board's budget, as long as the board approves the expenditure.
And the board can move between line items, so one gets overspent, one gets overspent. You know we've got a professional disagreement. As a commissioner, I didn't appreciate that subject. I didn't. And I'm not disputing, I'm not disputing from applying, it's just that when you take a look at the candidates, you can judge each by their management.
That's what I'm saying, between that and that, I'd rather not show you the question. I love work, you know, I thought I worked with the project last time, because I tell you that same issue came up again, one of the issues, I hate to comment on this, he had a couple of examples. As far as I'm concerned, I wanted two things, how do you do that and have that being here? And you might have better ideas than why I can't do it, but I just, you can do those two things, incorporate them, thank you, children, even when I'm ripped off, I may have been responsible for that, that's what I think I was, I may have handled it poorly the first time, used it the worst second time.
I am sorry that this, okay, the fourth guy, they should have had their points.
Hey, I'm an employee, I can do the best that I can, I'll keep you.
Inside, it applies, I knew it was underneath the damn thing, it was a procedure, no, been offered. Me, nobody else, nobody else, me, I can respect it, I respect it. Well, I'm fighting about it too, Bill, I want to wear the substitute amendment, I 'll keep that in mind.
I would prefer, if you were to sound as if it was one of the possible impacts. Can you ever sell your different? Just talk to him, then I said, I want to see how he's got something, I said, but I want to see how he's got that against, and he's talked about the fact that he's done some changes, he knows what my issues are, some of his issues haven't changed, but I'm what I should have to speak to.
Mr. Dax? Thank you, Chairman, we have several things on the agenda this morning for our planning items, the first item is dealing with grant opportunities, we've been notified by the Department of Forestry opportunities, and it's a grant for technical assistance, we would like for the commission to approve and authorize us to send in letters for technical assistance to apply for the grant, we got an email, they laid out the method of doing this, and we need to get a letter written, and essentially what we'd like to do is look at possibly getting some grant money to assist in our review of the Land Development Code, and so that's one of my primary functions, and also possibly the 331 corridor plan, if there's grant money available for that, I believe we were told it was up to $25,000 with no match, but again, we are asking authorization from the board to allow us to send in a letter of request for those grant opportunities.
I have a question first, what in the grant, you said that it would be used, oh, I'm sorry, in the grant you said it would be used for the three interchanges at I-10?
No ma'am, the primary, the two areas that we're looking at, and again, we haven't had the letters, they're not written yet, we're requesting authorization to prepare those and send those, the two areas that we're looking at is, again, the review of the Land Development Code, and also the corridor plan, and again, we've not identified precise things, well, we have some general ideas, but the corridor plan, we'd like to see maybe some land analysis, some things of that nature, but again, we haven't narrowed that down precisely.
Okay, because the information that I saw in the book, and now I can't get it to come up on my iPad, was that the grant would be used for, to economic development on I-10, I mean, three interchanges at I-10?
And then I think it was 331 corridor or whatever.
Is anybody on the copy, it's not, it's not in this book, and I can't get it to come up on my, on mine, and I would just, yeah.
It's the paper copy.
Yeah, okay, I would just say that, you know, yeah. Yeah, I know I saw it, because I was, I was trying to figure out why we would be doing economic development on all three I-10 interchanges, I can understand the one at 331, but the other ones, this is a copy of the...
Well, the 285 one is what the Mossy Head Industrial Park gives.
Right, yeah, yeah, it says here, it says here, recipient will review existing land use in proximity to the four I-10 interchanges and make recommendations for land uses to encourage a greater amount of economic activity, the four interchanges will be identified, and then you'll have amendments that will go, and that kind of thing, that's under number four, draft updated future land use, draft existing land use.
Exhibit A.
Have a workshop, it's in the, it's in the payment plan, exhibit B, it's on pages 16 to 23, it's a draft of I-10 interchange economic development strategy, that kind of thing, I just wondered, it seems to me that unless we rectify the Conference of Land Use Plan and the Land Development Code, we can do all the economic development planning that we want, but if we don't make those two consistent, then we are still chasing our tail from what, from my, from what I hear from the developers and the applicants coming to me, talking to me about what's going on in the permitting and in the planning process.
May I ask a question?
Yeah, go ahead.
I note these pages are marked sample, so that's not necessarily what...
That's not a word, no, that's not samples from us.
Okay, because I've missed where the fourth interchange was in Wallen County, but I mean, so, in other words, what you're submitting to us then is wording along this line is something of what we're going to be looking at, but it's going to pertain to 331 and not...
That's a sample of, is the state provided, and what we're looking to do is review the 331 corridor, if we get the grant, okay, the grant granted to us, and also Land Development Code revisions, the samples are samples that they show this is what it would look like.
But it's not, it's not meant to be specific to this particular grant, but just a sample of what the wording may tend to be.
That's right, that's right.
Okay, that's, I could figure out where the fourth interchange was, and I could figure out why we were doing it, I think the most important thing is the Conference of Plan and the Land Development Code, because everything emanates off of that, so I move that we approve the letter of request.
One second.
One second, all in favor? I oppose, motion carries.
Mr. Chairman, the next two items, I'm gonna ask Matt Carpenter to come up, as if they relate to affordable housing.
Good afternoon, Commissioners, Matt Carpenter for the Planning Department, or maybe still good morning for a few more minutes, the first item, I'm providing for information at this particular meeting, we presently have an Affordable Housing Advisory Committee that is required by statute when we receive ship funds, the membership on this committee has dwindled down to essentially about three people, and what I provided you is a list of, the most recent list of appointees, and then on the very last page of that is the statutory language that specifies the qualification for membership, and what I would like to request is that between now and the next board meeting, if we could come up with some prospective appointees that the board would consider appointing to this particular committee, it is an important committee that makes recommendations on the ship program to this board, so that, that's provided for information at this time.
Matt, a quick question, there's 11 names on here, all who indicate that their terms have expired.
Yes, sir.
Is that what you're looking for, is 11 more names?
Well...
Do we know if any of these people are willing to...
Well, if I could, Joel Paul has indicated a willingness to be reappointed, I think Latilda Henninger, who is now Latilda Hughes, would consider being reappointed, and Art Frisell has probably been our most consistent member attending, he would like to be reappointed also.
So you're looking for at least then eight other names?
We do need eight other members, and the present members...
What about Sue Rushing, you know, whenever it was done over services and I did it, she was on there, she was good.
She was very good, but she has resigned, and actually, the board accepted her resignation some number of months ago, possibly years ago.
So they only need four times a year, right?
Right.
Commissioner, one other thing about the ship program, I'm calling Matt, good morning, we are getting requests to forgive or release our lien by a variety of, and things arise at each other's, he sort of says, one, somebody owes the first mortgage, the ship mortgage is the second mortgage, there's a request to, plus, release the second mortgage, and then the owner will give a deed of little foreclosure to save the foreclosure cost out, so which, by the way, the filing fees are pretty dramatic, the second is there's a sale of the property, and there's not enough money in the sale to pay the first and the second mortgage, obviously, we hold this to be second, what I would ask you first, with your permission to do, is let me bring you guys recommendations on it, because you're gonna come up in a variety of situations, as land begins to turn over again, we're going to see more and more of these requests, so I'll just go into them individually, instead of trying to come up with one policy that fits every possible situation, if that's okay with you, please.
The third item that, for consideration today, we have a requirement to approve a new local housing assistance plan for the ship program, commonly referred to as the ELHAP, this is basically the plan that lays out how we would spend ship dollars if we do receive them, we're in the final year of our, the previous plan, and this would cover fiscal years 2013, 14, and 2015, this plan is required to be submitted by May 2nd, the Affordable Housing Advisory Committee, as thin as it might be, has met two times in the past 30 days, and has reviewed the plan, made recommendations to essentially continue the plan as was previously proposed, with one particular exception, we did have a strategy, and this was, this was previously listed as strategy number two, called Emergency Repair, when this plan was originally adopted some three to four years ago, the ship program had a separate category of funding for emergency repair, that category no longer exists, and those activities that would have been funded under that program have been folded into the substantial rehab program, so we haven't lost that opportunity, they've just consolidated the categories, and the committee found inappropriate to recommend the approval of that duplicative strategy. The other important question about this is, are we gonna get any more money, it appears that the legislature has swept the trust fund into the general fund this year, there's a possibility that that may not completely happen, and there might be funds available, so what we're asking is the board to approve the local housing assistance plan, in the event monies do come available within the next three years, we'll have our plan in place, and we'll be able to receive those funds and spend those for the benefit of low and moderate income persons within Wallen County.
Motion.
Motion to approve the ship local housing assistance plan, a resolution and certification.
Second.
Motion to say all in favor? I oppose, motion carries.
Mr. Chairman, the next items are part of our QJ items.
Anyone who expects to testify on any matter before the board under the guise of judicial period is at the time, please stand ready to run, and be silent or informed, because when you're about to get court order, which, and when you come to the podium, you should notify yourself, second, has any commissioner, I have any, has contact with any person on any of the items that are...
I have an item of recusal on the item with regards to Sam Destin due to a business relationship.
Thank you, Mr. and any others, thank you, and if there are any objections to the form or of the notice or the notice itself, any of the judicial... Here we go, it's all yours.
Mr. Chairman, we have several items that have requested to be continued or tabled, and may I go to those first, the item number one, prominence phase one, we have a request to continue until May 14th.
Motion.
Second.
Motion say all in favor? I oppose, motion carries.
Number two, Winter Garden at Watersound, phase three plat, a motion, a request to table this into a later date.
Second.
Motion second, all in favor? I oppose, motion carries.
Number three, Winter Garden at Watersound, phase four plat, again, another request to table.
So moved.
Second.
Motion second, all in favor? I oppose, motion carries.
Number four, as amendment to the Senate's DRI, request to continue until the May 14th meeting.
My issue to continue? Second.
Motion second, all in favor?
And the last one, we have...
And I abstain on that one.
The last one we have, and it continues, is the Rosemary Beach, phase seven B plat, request to continue until May 14th.
So moved.
Second.
Motion say all in favor? I oppose, motion carries.
Mr. Chairman, that brings it down, and number, item six on our agenda, the Idle Hounds Brewery, Brian Underwood, come up and give a brief staff presentation on this.
Good morning, I'm Brian Underwood, Planning Department. The Idle Hound Brewery Project is represented by McNeil, presented by McNeil Carroll Engineering Incorporated, as the engineer, the project is located on lot 17 of South Walton Commerce Park, the project is a proposed major development request to construct a 7,500 square foot commercial building to operate a brewery and beer bottling facility for wholesale distribution within a parcel containing approximately one acre, as of April 16th, 2013, there have been no public comments, and at this time, I make a, recommend a motion to approve Idle Hound Brewery, subject to all conditions being satisfied.
You have a couple of questions, is the parking, is it just going to be the workers there at the brewery, are they gonna, are they gonna have tours or anything like that?
Yes, ma'am, it was indicated by the applicant and the agent that the parking was exclusively for employees, it's wholesale only, that's the intention, there is space allocated for distribution and loading and unloading zones on the premises, parking was exclusively for employees.
Okay.
You have questions? Do you want to run it now? Any further comments?
Motion to approve? Second.
Motion say all in favor? I oppose, motion carries.
Mr. Chairman, the next item on the agenda is the Donut Hole at Inlet Beach, and again, I'll ask Brian Underwood to come up and give a brief staff presentation.
Again, Brian Underwood, Planning Department, this project is the Donut Hole Restaurant at Inlet Beach, it's located at the intersection of Highway 98 and Wall Street, excuse me, North Wall Street at Inlet Beach, this is a major development order request to establish a 6,559 square foot restaurant with associated parking on a parcel of approximately one The project received approval from the Designer Review Board on April 4th, 2013, the project then received approval by the Walton County Planning Commission on March 14th, 2013, and as of April 17th, 2013, there have been no public comments received, and at this time, I would request a motion to approve, subject to the applicant adequately satisfying all conditions.
Mr. Chairman, I have a question, or do we need a motion first? Dear, in, in the report that has been submitted, you indicate that the site is undergoing contamination remediation and is expected to last for another year and a half, so I really have two questions, it talks about a sparge system, what is a sparge system, and the second part would be, since this is going to be going on for another year and a half, does this conflict with what you're trying to do with, in regards to construction?
Initially, Commissioner, I would comment that I really don't have a background on that remediation system, and we, in this case, deferred the contamination and remediation question to the county engineering department, and we do have Chance Powell here as well, and he may be able to better address that.
Chance Powell, for the record, with privilege, I have been sworn, I can, I can tell you that we've been in contact with the environmental consultant from the very beginning of the design on this project, and actually have her with me here today, Nikki Hicks with EPT, they've agreed to work with us throughout the process, and our design has been put into place where we can work around their monitoring wells, which are on the southeast corner of the property, but if you'd like for that system to be explained, I do have Ms. Nikki Hicks here with the environmental consultant to explain that.
What is a sparge system?
I might have her, we could think about that, not me.
Hello, Nikki Hicks with EnvireProTech, hi, Nikki Hicks, and I've been working with Mr. Chandler and this group, this site is in the preapproval program, which is a state-funded program, there is petroleum contamination, I've been working on the site for over 10 years to clean it up, a sparge and vent system is a series of wells that are put into the water table, and they blow air, and then a vent system extracts that air, it is treated, and then put into the atmosphere, run through carbon, and what it does, it volatilizes the contamination, the hydrocarbons that are stuck in the soil and the groundwater, we've been working on the site for 10 years, me personally, we've taken care of the superficial aquifer, which is the upper aquifer, and now we're dealing with contamination that's down lower, there is really, this happens all the time where people build things, the state of Florida never wants for contamination to be an issue for people not to be able to build, they have been working with us, Mr. Chandler's been proactive in helping us move the system, money out of his own pocket to deal with the state impacts of that contamination.
So you're saying you don't believe there'd be a conflict between construction and the additional year and a half it's gonna take to do the remediation?
No, sir, no, sir, we do this, this is a frequent thing, where we work with the construction company, because the state, all of this has been paid for by the state, we work with the construction companies, with the engineering firms, to ensure the integrity of our system and what we've got on site, I will be personally out there when they do construction to make sure that the integrity of all of the wells in the system are in place, and the Donut Hole does not offer any environmental impacts as far as the consulting firm that I work for, I work under PGs and PEs.
So what comes out of the air? What comes out, what comes up, you said it releases it into the air?
It's treated, it's the dissolved hydrocarbons, which are, I'm not gonna get into all the technical stuff, but it's the, it volatilizes it, mobilizes it, it's brought into the air, and then it's passed through carbon, and the carbon strips all of the bad chemicals out of it, and then it's just clean air that's released.
Most of the two approve?
I just have another question, why, and maybe Chance would answer this, I see the parking with the Donut Hall, as we know, is very popular, and there's gonna be, you know, a lot of, a lot of people eating there, why didn't y'all provide more parking to the west, you know, you got kind of a, got some more areas that you could put parking, why didn't you put parking in?
I could explain that very easily, as you know, the Inlet Beach water system has the well site just to the north of this site.
Okay.
We are within the 500-foot wellhead protection zone as outlined in the Walton County Land Development Code, which restricts developments to, not allowed to have bulk storage or dispensing of petroleum products and that type of stuff, the Donut Hole project meets that 500-foot requirement, then there's a 200-foot requirement within Land Development Code that restricts the development to really, to anything without the prior approval of the water system, we work with the water system to set the building, this, this is the 200-foot line here, this is a 100-foot DEP requirement, wellhead protection zone, Inlet Beach Water System wanted us to move the building where it's completely outside of that 200-foot zone, we did that, here's the corner of the building here, here's the 200-foot zone, and they also had a specific requirement that they wanted us to meet the minimum parking standard for Walton County, they didn't want any more impervious surface within that 200-foot zone that we had to have, matter of fact, they even requested that all the parking spaces be pervious papers, so, so we've done that, now, also, you'll notice that right here, we've provided a cross-access opportunity, which is required by the chapter five Land Development Code and chapter 13, the senior corridor provisions, to provide access to the adjacent property, and all of this curving here is... And all of this curbing here is a Type E modified curb, which is a mountable type curb, and all of this will be sod. If there is additional parking needed, they could park in this sodded area. Inlet Beach Water System just didn't want us to put hard-ski parking there. We do have the minimum parking required by the code, just to meet both requirements, that's what we had to do.
Chance, is the tank out there?
I'm sorry?
Has the tank been removed?
There are no tanks on that site.
There are no tanks, there are no tanks on the site, really.
I'd like to see when we, if we approve this, that one of the major issues that we have with restaurants, especially, or bars, or whatever, is parking, when, when, you know, when it fills up, what people do is they'll park all up and down North Wall Street, may even park out on Highway 98. So what I'd like to see is no parking signs, and as part of the conditions of approval, no parking on North Wall Street right-of-way, included in the development order, and the county to put up no parking signs all along that section there.
I wouldn't see a problem with that, if that's something that you wish to have.
Because that would alleviate a lot of the problems that we're having now with restaurants that are already there, that if you go ahead and address it now, hopefully we can maybe alleviate some of that complaint from people who live on Wall Street, that there's cars all up and down, they can't get in.
Any other questions? Any other comments?
One of the things I'd like to change, and I'm sorry to put you guys on this, is I'd like the conditions of the approval to be read out loud, so that we know how the party or what those conditions are just sort of. We know exactly what they are when you vote to approve some of the department's conditions.
Do you want to read those out?
Okay, the conditions of approval are included on page two of the staff report. And item number one is the applicant must submit an acceptable master signage plan to be reviewed and approved by the Design Review Board. Item two, all conditions of the Environmental Department memo of 122612 are met. And that specific condition is, provide a copy of the NPDES permit prior to commencement of development. Item three, all conditions of the South Walton Fire District memo of December 20th, 2012 are met. That condition is, if this structure has a lightweight truss construction, the proper state-required signage must be installed prior to the issuance of the certificate of occupancy. Item four, conditions of the transportation certificate of concurrency are met. This condition is, the developer may be eligible to satisfy their transportation concurrency requirement through a proportional fair share contribution that shall be deposited into a special revenue fund as follows. Fair share fund, US Highway 98 Transportation Corridor 001-000-220.40-28, in the amount of $20,940.
And 1, 2, and 4 are conditions part of the development order, actually, the number 10, 3 would be part of the certificate of occupancy, is that correct?
Yes, sir.
And then I'd like to add that no parking signs be placed all along North Wall Street, and that no parking be allowed on 98 right-of-way or Wall Street. Is that a part of your motion, Commissioner? Well, it wasn't my motion, I think it was Bill's. But that's my.
Actually, I think it should be her motion, and I would second her motion to do that.
Can I ask one question for clarification on the parking signs? Are those provided by Public Works in place there? Or, okay.
Wouldn't we also have to check with DOT before we put any signage out on 98?
Well, with regard to 98, that's a curb and gutter section with a Type L, six-inch curb and gutter. You would definitely have to check with DOT, but I doubt you're gonna have many people jumping that curb and trying to park there on 98. It could happen, but if it's available, if it's available on, it's available on Wall Street, you're definitely gonna park there first.
So my motion would be approval, including the conditions, including number five condition, which would be no parking signs on the right-of-way of Wall Street.
I'll record that with Public Works, Public Works would be actually the one that comes out there on the record.
And Commissioner, just so I'm clear, because that fifth condition would be a condition of stability, right? You would, you want those conditions of development order, or the certificate of occupancy? So you probably want an order to process, what I would suggest.
Yeah, development order, because that usually is what goes into the record.
Motion to say, all motion in favor?
We have one more item under UJ items, and that is the eight Miramar Court Platte. Carpenter, come up and stand.
Matt Carpenter for the Planning Department. Platte number eight is final approval of the Miramar Court Platte. This is project number 13-003-00007. This is the platte application submitted by Rare Earth Inc., consisting of 10 residential units on 1.25 acres, with a future land use of neighborhood planning area infill. Project's located at the intersection of East Hashu and Professional Place, and identified This is a project that was originally approved in 2006 and constructed in 2008. It did have a platte application in process when the economy tanked, and they just never completed that. The infrastructure has been certified as complete, and they have now met the requirement for plating this particular project. It will also include a recreation impact fee, an amount of $3,808.70, as confirmed by the property appraiser's most recent certified assessment rule, in Section 11.03.03 of the Land Development Code.
On page two, and maybe I missed, missed heard what you said, in the engineering aspect, it says, "All improvements are in place and certified, with the exception of the underwater, or, excuse me, the understructure stormwater retention basis." Have those been complete?
No, sir, and those won't be complete until homes are actually constructed on those lots. This is one of the group of developments that, in the mid-last decade, was approved with understored retention, rather than having a conventional retention pond that took up additional acreage. We have a number of those that are moving their way through the process, we have lots of those being constructed now, and that is a condition of this particular development order, that they have understored retention. Now, when those actually come through as building permits, that's when that understored retention is certified by a professional engineer as part of the building permit process prior to certificate of occupancy. Not something that could be constructed prior to building permit stage.
Mr. Carpenter, could I just ask a question? We're talking about 10 single-family lots on 1.25 acres.
They're small lots, and in this particular case, they're gonna be fairly small houses.
I should say, what kind of house can you get on them? I mean, I own approximately 1.25 lot, you know, and my house is on it, and yeah, I could probably get one more house back there, but I don't think I could get 10. Jeez.
Well, I certainly agree with you, that's incredibly compact development, but it's what this board approved some number of years ago.
And it meets the land use requirement?
Yes, ma'am, it meets all of our requirements.
Yeah. Well, you know, when land becomes very valuable, you're gonna get, you're gonna see more and more of that kind of thing.
Mr. Carpenter, under the original major development order, there was a provision in here that if they failed to commence construction within one year, that they would basically lose this order.
And they essentially completed the project, they just didn't complete the plating process.
Okay.
The construction was done, and all of the, essentially, the only infrastructure that applies to this, by and large, is the roadway and some utility connections. And as part of this plating process, we made sure those things were recertified to the satisfaction of the utility company.
Thank you.
Commissioner, if I could just have one question. Maybe I'll get them on sitting, but there's a dedication statement, here's on the platte, dedicating, probably here is the, obviously, by acceptance, by acceptance, but I don't see any of the actual drawing. There's a road that apparently has already been dedicated to building. And then in the interior, it says common area, and it says 40-foot private right-of-way, and I just wanna make sure I know what we're, what's being dedicated and what's being accepted, just so that it's, it's huge. I'm still waiting on the ship option. I'm surprised.
How can it be, how can it be a common area?
In the very middle, it says common area, it says 40-foot private right-of-way, I just wanna make sure I'm accepting that.
And that is not being dedicated to public maintenance, public access to that? And the homeowners association, we have confirmed, has been properly reinstated, and there's a copy of the covenants, conditions, and restrictions attached that indicate that those common areas will be the responsibility of the homeowners association.
So there's nothing within the building itself that's being dedicated?
That is correct.
Do we need to close the public hearing? Are the conditions of approval?
Yeah, I'll read them.
Conditions of approval of, made the recreation impact fees. Let me if I can just read those.
May I, may I just make one correction? It is a recreation platte fee and not an impact fee?
Recreation impact fee, paid as, as a result of the plating process.
It is not an impact fee. That board, the prior boards have made that determination specifically, and Mr. Davis, prior to you, prior county attorneys have made that as a specific statement?
We'll make that clarification, thank you.
Any other questions?
As far as the conditions go, in order for the clerk to record this, they will have to deliver a check with a 911 addressing fee, a check for the recording fee, and a check for the recreation platte fee. And those are the conditions.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Any other comments?
All motion. All motion say all in favor?
A motion to close the public hearing?
Second.
Commissioner, the next item is number nine, it's a legislative item, it is the US 331 corridor ordinance, and Matt Carpenter can also present that.
Second.
Commissioners, this is first reading of a proposed ordinance amending Chapter 13 of the Walton County Land Development Code to add the US 331 corridor as a Walton County scenic corridor, defining the limits of the corridor, adopting a map of the 331 corridor, and establishing the intended corridor design standards shall be to manage and promote economic development along Walton County Central Transportation Corridor, being widened to four lanes to preserve and enhance the scenic views along the US 331 corridor, to enhance the visual characteristics of the east and west sides of the US 331 corridor, to eliminate roadside clutter, and establishing a requirement to develop the US 331 corridor master plan, which will establish more specific provisions for permitted uses of structures, prohibited uses of structures, setbacks, landscaping standards, driveway access parking standards, sign control, setting standards for parking and right-of-way improvements, and providing for separability, and providing for an effective day. Essentially, the purpose of this corridor is to give this body time to decide what you want this corridor to be, or the purpose of this particular ordinance. It's consistent with the excerpt from the 2013-14 strategic objectives adopted by this board, and specifically, to improve the economy of Walton County through the development of a comprehensive economic development strategy, growth of existing businesses, diversification of local economy, and development of a master plan for the US 331 corridor. I know there's been lots of discussion about this, but I'm gonna boil it down to just what As this corridor gets widened to four lanes, traffic is gonna increase tremendously. I mean, it's right through the central part of our county. And this will be the next area that we'll develop in Walton County. In spite of our efforts to promote our industrial parks, the market is going to develop this corridor. We have already had a number of inquiries regarding additional billboards. And what I'm proposing here, essentially, is a framework to provide some amount of structure in our land development code for this board to decide exactly how much regulation you want, or how little regulation you like. But there are two things in here that I'm proposing to give this board additional time to decide what you want, and to sort of hold the doors until you have time to decide that. One of those is the prohibition of new billboards, and that will also make those, the existing ones, non-conforming uses that can't be expanded or improved or enhanced in the meantime, and the other small change is to prohibit abandoned signs. Now, this board might decide that you like billboards, and you want to have as many as possible. But in the meantime, if this ordinance could be approved, it'd give you time to decide that before the market decides it for you. Other than that, that is all it does.
Matt, what about those billboards? What I'm thinking about is right there in Woodlawn, on the east side of 331 North. I'm not sure who, if it's Lamar, or who it is that has it, but it's gonna be taken out of, the right-of-way is gonna eat it up. Will they have the option to move it further back to the east, and put it back up?
If DOT approves that.
If DOT approves.
Because all of those billboards also have to have the approval of the Department of Transportation.
And the landowner, I guess it would be put up?
Commissioner, I know that Department of Board, that we hired Mr. Jones just last week to work on some projects for Walton County, having to do with economic development. This is one of those projects that I assigned to him initially, is to take a look at the 331 corridor, and he has an action plan already, that he'll be coming around and speaking with each one of you. Mr. Jones, would you like to say anything at this time? I think that we've got a lot of things to look at, so I think we should address each of those. I don't, I'd like to ask Mr. Carpenter if he wanna get a jumpstart on this, but I'm not so sure that we're ready to just prohibit things unless we take a look at what the implications of that would be.
Thank you, Mr. Neers. We're planning on meeting with each and every individual over the next week, 10 days, to look at how broad or how narrow we want, you as the board, want restrictions on this corridor. What you will see is a list of those criteria that are listed out in Chapter 13 of the Land Development Code, and what we're asking you to do is to identify those which you feel should be applied on the corridor along 331. Could be one, or two, or three, it could be 10 or 12. But what I'm trying to do is facilitate that discussion so that we know what areas you can restrict and put standards on, and those which you choose not to. So the whole effort is to create a corridor that we'll all be proud of when folks leave it. So the whole effort is to create a corridor that we'll all be proud of when folks leave I-10 or leave Highway 90 heading to south or coming back north, to whatever degree you choose to do that. So we're, my objective is to facilitate that process so that as we move forward, staff will know what areas you want to see addressed in the development standards for the, for the corridor.
You know, I think now's the time, we can always lift it, am I not correct, Mr. Carpenter? But I know one of the issues that I have, and especially at night, and it's in, it's past Freeport, it's that billboard that's, yeah, you know, that thing is absolutely blinding into the neighborhood. So to, to restrict billboards right now, we can always lift it, but I certainly agree with Mr. Carpenter, that now is the time to, to say no right now, because they will start jumping, you know, this is going to be a major corridor and we don't want to be absolutely littered with, with billboards, you know? We want to be, we want to have businesses along there with their own signs. So to, to put a restriction on them right now that can be lifted later, I think is a good move.
And if I could, those billboards that exist on the day this ordinance is approved will be grandfathered in. And I, just to give a little bit further information, when we first started working with this, with our county attorney, Tony Craig, the idea of a moratorium on any new billboards was, I brought that up as a possible method that we could use as a temporary way to just hold on until this board could decide what they actually wanted to do. She recommended against that particular avenue. And this is the framework that we came up with.
Any questions? Any votes in common?
Just a quick question. Has the board, I need a page, has the board made this initial decision on the vision of whether it wants the 331 expansion, and I assume we're talking about north of the bay, because the standards are already in, south of the bay, 331? Is, is the consensus of the board that they want the corridor to do, to be developed as a scenic corridor or just as a commercial corridor? Because obviously that, that'll influence a lot of the decision-making right there.
Turning that into a Highway 98 scenic corridor. The people in the north end don't want scenic attached to that corridor in any shape or fashion. And I, yeah, we need to restrict what goes on out there. So it still looks good, but to refer to it as a scenic corridor, I'm not in support of it.
So you don't anticipate at any point seeking a designation as a scenic corridor?
Not me.
And the grants and so forth that go with that?
And maybe scenic is the wrong choice of word, maybe a commercial corridor, yeah, to, to have some kind of-
And I certainly understand the board's wishes there, but the language that we use supports the prohibition of billboards for this, at least temporary period of time. That, all of that could be changed once the board decides what you really want it to be. This will buy you some time to be able to decide that.
We did that in central Florida, and we did that in central Florida, and immediately the billboard association filed a lawsuit immediately. And we went round and round, and they have, they have some legal rights there that I think we need to check into before we just say, you know, you can't do it. Because-
Then all the ones that are there would be grandfathered in, so soon be removing them, or any application of those.
This was, this was the case in this event as well. I mean, they were grandfathered in, they got to stay, but the, they came, the board association hasn't restored lobby. I'm just saying that, you know, it might make sense to investigate Mark Davis, the legal ramifications of doing that, before we, we do it.
Any other questions? Any other comments?
If we set it for a hearing on May 9th, do they give you time to look into that issue and bring it back to us?
If that runs to May 14th, that's higher.
It's May 14th, yeah, okay, yeah, I saw it. Then we can decide what to do from there. So this motion is just to set up a, a doctrine hearing, and that's it. All right, I'll make that motion.
Second.
I want to say all voters in favor? Opposed? No motion here. Any other votes in common?
Motion to close the public hearing.
Second.
I want to say all voters in favor? Opposed?
Motion to adjourn. Second.
Third.